That's pro line. That's pro line. Pro line, that's not a foul back.
Okay. They've notified the commission that ISM Solar will not be filing an RDA for the access road relocation at this time. Outback Engineering notified the commission that Reed Brothers Farm Limited Partnership has withdrawn its notice of intent for the driveway project on Zero Williams Street. We're issuing a notice of intent by Anton Roberts.
Say it again?
You're up, Cohen.
As far which parcel? Lot three or lot four?
Access map nineteen, lot fourteen, parcel three, Main Street.
Parcel three, yeah.
You don't have another one, Bob?
Oh, I didn't know. You guys should have one.
Yeah. I've got this over right here.
I got one right here.
We don't have an easel. I don't know what happened to it coming to store.
We got two.
This is the original plan, right?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
That was the original.
Yeah.
It's okay, Bob. Everybody calling, Jerry, Chris Capone, he's the boss. He originally hung the flags on the entire parcel going up Main Street and then taking a corner and following it along Main Street. So he did all the flagging out there. The flagging was done before we got involved in the job. And then relocated the flags with our survey equipment so that they were accurately shown on the plan. This parcel is what we filed those from tent four, like we discussed at the last meeting. He wants to build a single-family house on the lot. The lot as we showed, based on the flag line that was put in. I'm showing the pink line here is the 25-foot no touch zone. The orange line is the 50-foot no structure zone. The yellow line is the 100-foot buffer zone. And located, the peritest was done by somebody else, another engineer. Relocated their work and then designed the septic system based on that. I'm showing the house outside the 50-foot no structure zone, the septic system outside the 100-foot buffer zone. Now, we reviewed, Chris Capone reviewed the consultant's letter. And we went out there before she looked at it and hung new flags on the old flags. The same branch, the same tree trunk that the old flags around. They were still visible, but we just wanted to get clean flags on this so she could see where they were. When we, so we put these flags in. I think on her comments, she didn't have a situation like concerns about all these flags. But up in this corner, the flags are missing because of the activities that have taken place on parcel four. A lot of the flags are gone. But we did show these. Now, Chris, you can jump in anytime you want. But he did his work the same way through the whole site when he hung them. And again, she didn't have a problem with the line coming in here. Her problem was is that she couldn't find the flags that came up here on the property. There was one in the corner here. I think there was a tree that Tommy had cut down. So that corner was disturbed. So she was concerned about that. And her concern would be that if this wetland line here wasn't accurate, then it could possibly push the 100-foot buffer further this way, which would then go into the septic system. So Chris, I think she knows what he did and I think he's...
Which flag is missing?
The ones on...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yes, that's where the tree was.
Just twenty-four?
Yes. And the other flags that came down from here, and then onto the other parcel. But nothing missing on this parcel. The ones that were missing is on here where he's done some filling.
I delineated the parcel, for the record, Chris Capone, I'm a wetland consultant. I delineated the parcel in September of 2016. As most members are aware, this used to be two agricultural fields here on Main Street. And there also was an old field alongside this barn that exists on Williams and the corner of Main. I mean, those fields are evidence from 2009, 2001, and right up into 2014. These fields are visible. What's happened in this particular area is this is a wet meadow. So after the farmer stopped utilizing the field, you see that area starting to approach up into this area. Yep.
You're calling that a field right behind the existing barn?
Yep.
What did he grow there?
At one time, he grew celery in that area. And he also had, he used to plow it and put corn in there. I mean, it's very evident in historic photos. Despite that, I'm just saying for the record, there was an AP layer in this field that was in excess of 18 inches. So the wetland soils didn't exist until below that. So the reason my flags came up and turned in this manner is because that's where the soil started changing and indicating that this was wetter during most of the year than this section.
Yeah, well, this is a wet meadow right in here.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Right.
And that was flagged?
Yes, correct. Again, I flagged this before any activity was done on the site.
There were no flags existing on this...
On that section?
No. They stop here, they run right across to there.
Correct.
I don't know what happened to them, but...
Well, it's pretty obvious what happened to them. Somebody went in there and disturbed it, which wasn't something that should have transpired. And we understand that. What we're trying to do is establish that the line, at the time I was here, again, before any disturbance occurred, I believe this is accurately portrayed.
But Mrs. Novak...
Yes.
...determined that because this was all, the land was removed, the soil was removed, the only thing that she could find now were hydroxic soils.
Well, the only thing, the only thing remaining is hydroxic soils because he removed all the AP layer, which was the lone layer. So what's left is that, is that hydroic layer that you're sitting there.
But our consultant went and did the survey and can't find the flags, can't find hydroic soil. And that's where she determined the new wetland line is.
Correct, correct. I can, I can understand her having concerns because of that being previously disturbed. So what I'm just trying to tell the board is I was here before anybody had disturbed it. And I feel it's established correctly. Even based on the soils on the last page, my line basically follows that soils division from the Ridgeberry to the Woodbridge soils almost identically for what they show on that. So I do support my line. I think Marty also had concerns around this section of the line from 22 to 24.
Yes, he did.
Correct.
And that would more adversely affect this than any work over in that area.
Well, in order to provide you some comfort in this decision, we can slide the septic system in order to maximize the setback for that.
But will it be 100 feet away from?
Yes.
It won't be 100 feet away from what she saw?
I don't, I don't know how far up she had saw, but again...
She didn't put any flags in.
It just mentions adjustments to 22 through 24. It doesn't indicate how much. And I know she's here, maybe she can reiterate on that.
Sure she can. I know you're not here for that, Marty, but would you mind?
No, not at all. From wetland flag 22, that's about 10 feet up gradient of the wetland boundary at that time. And the wetland flag 24, which I believe Chris mentioned it, or Bob had said... Was actually, I didn't find it, but I actually did find it. It was hanging out there. And I was, my plot I took was a five-feet up gradient of the line. In my report, I state that it could be up further than that, but I found hydroic soils and dominant wetland vegetation up gradient of that. And the, and over here, like the commission said, these flags are missing.
Correct.
So, and obviously the setback from that would be important for the septic system. And this was extremely wet in here. So, I mean, the commission would need to go out and confirm those flags on that site. So they would need, I believe you mentioned that your flags relocated by survey.
So we can put them exactly where they are.
So, yeah. In this area here, you know, they stripped it down to hydroic soils and now it's all wetland vegetation. So I believe at the last meeting, I suggested maybe going back to a pre-existing conditions plan with topo on it to see how much, you know, they brought the site down.
I don't know, do you have elevations at the flags when you surveyed them?
I'd have to check and see because we surveyed, where you see these contour loins, that's where our shots were, like our last shots, because it interpolates in CAD drawing where we take the shot. So I don't see like our contours aren't going to the flag. So they probably didn't go in that far when we did the topo.
So you wouldn't be able to tell. So it's really hard to tell what was there before, whether it was close enough to the, you know, surface that that could have been wet there. But like I, I didn't see it before that work was done. But, you know, over here is very wet.
Oh, that's definitely a wet meadow situation. But to be honest with you, the driest part of this area was right here, this corner. This, this was being fed by this way. There was water coming into this site from this direction. So this was your driest section of the property when I reviewed it.
But if these flags don't represent the actual line and they move further this way, that's going to impact this too.
Oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
What should happen is this is actually flagged as it is today, not as it might have been back when you did this. There's definitely a wet meadow here. And it's already been partially filled with vision enforcement order for that parcel.
Correct, I'm aware of that now.
In retrospect, this parcel was worked on before a permit has been issued. That's the one we're working with right now.
Correct.
And that didn't get an enforcement order. It deserved one, but it didn't.
Well, Charlie, for the record, there was an old box trailer that sat right in this vicinity here. And I think when Mr. Roderick bought the property, I think he pulled that box trailer out. That box trailer was overgrown with vegetation and it had sat there for many years. So I believe that partially that disturbance, not necessarily excavating, but there could have been some disturbance from that removal.
But the excavating is pretty obvious.
Well, again, for the record, yes. There was some cutting in there and that's obviously disturbance.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but in my opinion, that wetland line should be reestablished as it is today. That's what we asked for when Marty came and reported. And that's the way it should be.
Okay. Now, the commission is getting a 25-foot no activity area, which in essence gives you...
That's big example too.
Well, not in reality, when this house is built, that 25-foot, you guys could incorporate a permanent barrier that's erected here. A stone wall or a row of boulders in a, in a method to eliminate any future encroachment to that site.
Well, right now, it's, it's been excavated right back to the wall. And this wetland line must run right along that wall.
Well, there's a wall here. I think this is the wall. Is there a sidewall? There was a sidewall in there too, a remnant one?
Yeah.
Okay. So the board wishes for...
All you may. I don't know what, we haven't discussed it.
Yep, I understand. Now, the reason being for our concerns are obviously it's a tight lock. It's gone through planning board, it's been approved by everybody. And, you know, the final comment's coming down to when it's got a purchase and sales on it is when we realize that now there is an issue, so...
So you'd be able to move the septic the way the reserve is now and save that for a reserve for a rainy day?
I could do that or I could take, I'd get 19 feet to the property line. I can move the reserve over nine feet. I can move this way nine feet. I'd get 19 feet to the property line in the front. I need 15 for my breakout elevation. I could come up four feet this way and I could come nine feet over this way. I could even possibly turn it this way. So I do have play. So if these flies come up five feet, 10 feet, whatever they come up, I need to know where the flag line is first and then I can make it work, you know.
If it's reestablished, you would know what you're working on.
Yeah, that's what I do. So I mean, we can, whatever the board wants, we can, I could put these back exactly where they were and then they could possibly meet together.
If that's the actual delineation, yeah. But it may be further up than that.
That's right. But I could put them in as a guide or we could just, you guys could just go back out there together and agree on where you think the line should be and then we can locate that and then work off that. We just want to work off a line that this board has approved. And then we see what we can do with it. But I definitely have room to move the system. The system was only put here because we sent in the house pretty much in the lot. We did that with all the houses. And then I keep the filling in the front of the house and then they walk out the back. So I just put it in the front of the house just so that would keep the filling right in the front of the house. But I can kick it over and you can do more filling based on what the outcome is of the new flag line.
Would the board feel comfortable moving 22 through 24, five feet and getting approval this evening?
Well, we don't know if, if five feet is adequate.
Whatever you, when you go out there and do your re-flagging, you establish where the line is and we'll have Marty check it.
Okay, that's, I was hopefully trying to get it through tonight, but if the board wishes to have another side of it.
It should continue right around...
No, it has to continue over into the other lot, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, despite the issues you have. Is that going to be discussed tonight as well? The lot four enforcement order, that's already been discussed? Is lot four going to be discussed this evening or it's really until we...
Well, we have it on the agenda, but he's removed piles of debris that he's using to build the wall, or walls.
Yep.
But the original filling that the enforcement order was issued for is still there.
Okay, all right.
But I believe that he has hopes of filing a notice of intent to get an exemption, agricultural exemption. But that's his decision.
That's an after the fact filing, obviously you're looking for.
But right now, what we ask to get removed is only partially removed.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I just make a motion that the line be re-flagged correctly and another revised plan be presented to the commission.
Second? All in favor?
Now, give me, just, do you want a certain distance? Do you want to A 28 or you want the whole? You obviously want this area reviewed again for soil. So you're basically looking to what he disturbed. Because this is more critical right here. This rarely is not critical.
Right now...
This is critical right here.
Walking in there, it's wet meadow, almost to the back of the existing barn.
Yep.
We'll deal with that with the enforcement decision. Because he's filled in the area right up from the barn out, but...
I did observe the disturbance. I didn't see to what extent. But again, we'll reestablish these flags to the point where, right now, I'm concerned with this lot, not so much this here, so...
22 to...
28, to where it turns a corner, approximately. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have nothing back just so I have fun hatch up. Do you have time, Marty? Or I can, I can get in touch with you while I'm on the... Just present the revised plan and then go from there?
Um, I think, well, it's up to you really.
Yeah, all right, all right.
Whatever you have.
I'll just let you know what I observed and what I find and I'll, okay, I'll follow you. All right.
Mr. Roderick? Enforcement order issued.
What can I tell you? I'm removing.
Sit anywhere you'd like, Tony.
Okay. We always say, I'm working on it, as you can see.
You took out the big piles of stones, but the stuff you laid down underground is still there.
Yeah, we're gonna start taking that out next.
Huh?
We'll start taking that out next.
That's gotta come out too.
Yeah.
Only eight to 10 to 12 inches, but it doesn't belong there.
Okay.
So when you have time...
Yep.
I know you're busy. Some beautiful walls you've built with that.
Thank you. That's where the stones come from.
That's all I had to say with that.
Anything else? Try to work on that.
No. Get it done, Tony.
Okay, I'm working on it.
And you're spending time.
Yeah, yeah.
A hearing for, request for an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation by Downwind Realty.
Who?
Downwind Realty.
Sweet No? They asked for a continuous. And Marty did the wetland line, I tried to. It's so overgrown so much, they, they can't find the flag. So they have, it's going to cut the line right next to the wetland flag, so it's passable. So they did, they asked for a continuous. That's to 10/11.
Can't do it if you can't find the flags?
I did, I did find a lot of, there's a lot of section that is impassable.
A hearing for a notice of intent requested by Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game.
I think we're one guy. So we're taking a look at Swinell Park, approximately 2010, state per set property. Canoe access is currently down at the water. It's being used right now. We have a canoe access up in Berkeley also. We're looking at doing a canoe access in Water Street in Dayton. So they're looking at kind of a few different areas. But existing right now, there's a gate, existing gate, there's actually access road that, I walked it even today. There's some gravel along it, there's some asphalt, there's grass. It's a little bit everything, but there's a path. Actually, there's a driveway here, send it all the way down to the...
Where's the building?
Uh, there's no, oh, the building is right here. The house is right here. So we got the house, we got the chain link fence, which is still, still there. It still looks like a house, really, with just a house in front.
That's because it is.
Yeah, it's actually used as a DCR, actually, facility. So, so basically what it is, it's adding about three feet to the existing path down. May have to remove a couple of trees. They're really right on the border and extend it all the way down to the water. Staying outside with some parking outside the 100-foot and with a path just so people can carry their kayaks or canoes down to the water.
This is water?
This is water right here. So, yeah, so basically the Taunton River, you can see right along the sill fence. I had sill fence kind of right along the water's edge. So back and forth, depending what you think. We were thinking about doing just a drop-off, pick, pickup, no park at 65 feet from here. But that would be within the 100-foot buffer zone. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that. We were trying to keep it outside the 100-foot buffer zone, but...
Hard to do with a boat ramp, isn't it?
Oh, it is. And now, back in 98, we have with DEP, we went back and forth for a long time, I included in the NOI. But finally, they did agree that you can't, you have to do work within water.
Yeah, almost all of that is outside of jurisdiction.
Yeah, and actually this, we're not, since this is actually, there's actually stone here. There's actually, it's actually nice, nice gravel in the water. So we're not going to, sometimes we put planks or different things, but we're not doing any work in the water on this one. It's just basically trying to get people down. From what I'm told, I, I don't know this site. I mean, I, I'm in Westboro, so I'm just an engineer for the Department of Fish and Game for them. I'm told people bring kayaks down there now. I don't know if it's by vehicle, if they just drag them down. But if it's dragging, that's a far distance. The one, one thing that came up and when we're looking at, there, there is a small pond right here that's, that's right, right along. It looks like it's, there's no inlet, no...
That's right by the river.
Right, yeah, there's no inlet, no outlet. So it looks like a man-made pond that's very, very shallow. So it might be a limited, according, I actually typed up the C N R, limited resource, I think. Land subject to flooding is almost what I considered it because it's not... But, I mean, we could try to move the existing path around it if we see fit. But that's kind of, kind of what we're looking at doing. Existing, there's not much parking. There's a couple of spots up here. The parks are typically open some light to sunset. So you're not going to get people going up and down at night. But there's really not much food. It's like fields and a bunch of different...
Been back there, Charlie?
Yeah, I went down there. It's primitive.
It's actually, I went down there today and we were down there in the spring and it was a lot wider and stuff. They let it overgrow quite a bit. I don't know if that's because they're not allowing people down there at this point, but it might not, because of how it looks, allow vehicles anymore. But, so we would pretty much use the existing.
But the path is there now.
Yeah, we're looking at, almost just trying to do like an eight to 12 inch trench grade, just to kind of give it a little... We don't want to do by two minutes or anything like that. We want something just to kind of make sure it's not, people aren't going to get stuck or anything on the way down. Because it's just, it's a weird, I have photos too. I mean, we got, if you haven't been down there, it's like gravel, you got the existing path looking up. So that's kind of looking back to the road. You got the existing gate, that's the existing launch. So really, people just bring their kayaks right down to here, so...
So the proposed entrance is going to come in on the south side of the house now, where the gate is?
Uh, where the gate is, yeah. And the exact location off the road, I have to take a look at some of the sightlines just to make sure people could see it off around the corner. So the exact, but it's going to come off of that side of the house. Kind of use that existing gate and existing, we're hoping to use that existing driveway even because it's already there. Kind of make it as easy as possible. Looking at maybe five tree removal at this time at the max, kind of did...
But the five tree removal is...
It's close, I mean, there's, there's...
Quarter of a mile from the river.
Yeah, yeah. The only one that we might have to move, remove is right there. And I mean, looking at it, I don't think we're going to need to. There's one tree that's going to be right up. And we can also move that up a little bit. I mean, that's going to be, so there should be no issues with trees or anything. This is a big, big open field is basically what it is.
No, I've been down.
Yeah, it's a beautiful site. It's about 50 acres.
Yep, it's really nice.
Any questions? I have, I've all your paperwork too, going for you guys. In this folder, certified mail-ins, the security footage holders.
I'm telling you, much done.
Yeah, so basically the NOI number and that's the proof of file and all that. So I don't know if any of that for your records.
Charlie wants to...
Yeah.
Thanks.
There's anything else I could drive, drive, let me know.
Questions?
Is that going to affect any of the houses that are already there?
It shouldn't. I mean, there are two houses over in this area. It is tree lined and there are fences over there. I haven't gotten called yet. I don't know if anybody else is here on the location.
It's curiosity, you know what I mean? Because you'll be driving by the back of the other houses there, that's all.
Yeah, there are a couple over here. If it does become an issue, the fences, different stuff. And the nice thing about these sites is because it's only sunrise to sunset, you're not going to get headlights going up and down and that type of stuff because that's a lot where the complaints go. And it's only seven spots. I don't see it being heavily used. Most of the time, these sites, I mean, they're beautiful. They get one to two people a day using it. And I think what it's going to be is you have people upriver, dropping in, coming here, pick up their, going out. I don't think it's going to be, but even today, there was four cars parked. Really, they should look at doing some more parking up here because the parking's terrible at that. But that's a, that's a motor story. That's not me, so...
All right, that's just a...
That's just your plan?
Yeah, yeah. And this, this one, all, all this one is, I can, I have sections of different stuff. But this is just showing the sill fence, it would be pretty typical hay bales, sill fence. We'll do a construction answer just to make sure stuff's, debris isn't getting in and out during construction, that, that type of stuff. I mean, timeline, because we're the state, by available funding. So it could be next spring, it could be, it could be in three years, calling you guys up and saying, can we get an extension on this? Because that happens quite a bit. So just, just to end up on that too.
I don't have problems.
Any questions on this project? Sweet No project?
No questions.
Looks like you're a pretty good trip.
Ah, it should be a beautiful site, hopefully. It's kind of a wasted space right now.
Thank you. If you need anything else, I know. What was that?
If you need anything else, just, you got my...
All right, uh, we got your...
I got cards.
Yeah, your information.
There's a card also.
Okay. Oh, you got one there?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing and issue a notice of intent.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Thanks.
We are hearing a notice of intent requested by Madeira Ventures Inc. Constructed single family dwelling in the septic system.
Richard in a long time.
I know it. Still kicking. Lot one first?
I know, I recognize it. Lot fifty-seven, lot one, Mar, Miss Maris Lane.
Yeah, there's, there are two of them, one's lot one and one's lot five.
I've got tons of plans over here.
This is, this is lot one.
First, first tell me where Maris Lane is.
So off of Center Street.
Okay.
I put the.
That's what I'm looking for.
I put the.
Look, this is the original. Have you guys planned any different than the original one, Richard?
No.
Okay.
Same as the original.
So, so this is lot, uh, five, which is at the end of Maris Lane, this is the cul-de-sac turnaround. I've colored in light brown the proposed dwellings.
That's lot five, isn't it?
Yeah, you had opened up lot five.
One.
Lot six.
Well, we got lot five, I'm sorry.
Oh, lot six is just.
All right, okay, all right, okay.
So at the bottom of the plan is a conservation area, which is a, a no disturb area, and I've just shown the limit of it in, in orange here. There are, there are no wetlands anywhere near the site, um, but, but obviously the approval of the conservation area was that you review the, the plans, so proposed dwelling, proposed driveway, sewage disposal system in the front yard, and the backyard is swaled to come.
The streets up there.
To the north.
Center streets up there. This is the last lot.
Yeah, the, yeah.
On that particular side of the street.
That's right, lot five, and then lot six is just to the north of that. So, so we're showing a proposed dry well to infiltrate the roof runoff, and we're showing, um, infiltration chambers for the, for the leaching field.
The drainage easement runs between the house and the property next door.
The new, the new drainage easement runs down along that south side and then, then along that east side.
Now, the planning board has problems with the existing drainage, and they're not gonna issue building permits until it's corrected. How will that affect the house that you proposed to put in? No, it's right next door to it.
Yeah, but this is, we're, we're elevating it, the, the problem came further to the south, uh, it was a bowl, it was basically a bowl, so the water was just collecting, it had nowhere to go. And it would have eventually flooded the house that was actually constructed there, so, um, the, the pipe basically takes up that low point and brings it down to a natural low point.
Right.
So we're, we're just basically draining the bowl to there, so there's no, the, the water that would eventually come here is still coming here, so we presented plan with all calculations showing how.
That easement, that drain easement goes back to the detention area?
Detention, well, the drainage from the street comes and goes to the, to the detention area, and these pipes here go by the detention area.
Same thing, but to get the water from below, doesn't that have to be dug deeper than it is right now, the drainage system is in there now, isn't it?
It's all, yeah, it's all constructed, and, and if we.
But it's not working.
Right.
Right, so because, because they had that depression that was filling up with water, it was necessary to drain that. So, so this is a whole entirely independent drainage system, not connected to the pipes in the road, not connected to detention basin. So the detention basin was okay, the pipes in the road were okay, but there was a big sink behind several of the homes.
Behind lots three and four.
And, and that would have basically filled up enough in, in certain situations where it would have impacted the homes, it would have flooded into the houses. So, uh, we basically came up with a solution that it's, it's a set of two pipes that had to come down and, and drain that bowl well enough so that even in a hurricane storm, those homes will not be flooded.
But that's still a bone of contention with the contractor, with the owner.
Yes.
I, I mean, he's gonna do work.
To my understanding, the planning board sent an email to me saying that no, uh, building permits will be issued until the drainage problem is resolved.
Right, it, it's resolved on paper, but it's not resolved in the woods, in, in the field, so, so what the planning board is saying to you is they're not gonna allow the lots to be built upon until that's, pipe is physically put in the ground. They, they've agreed to the solution, they want to see the solution actually executed.
The Madeira Ventures is the same ownership as Palmer River.
Not, not really, it's a separate entity, it's a separate entity and it actually owns the, this property. Palmer River is the person who's actually in the field doing the work, building the homes and overseeing the construction in the field.
But Palmer River is still the owner and Madeira Ventures?
No, Madeira Ventures is the owner of the property.
But it was Palmer River?
It was Palmer River.
We, the principal of Palmer River has been very uncooperative with the commission. They damaged, uh, a conservation restricted area on lot six over two years ago. We still haven't got it resolved, we've tried to get it resolved, he submitted a plan to rehab the area, and he's never followed through. It's upsetting to the property owner, and it's, it aggravates me too, because he's really not, uh, a very reliable fellow.
I'm aware of that, and when prime engineering stepped in to take over, not only this project, there are a few other community projects.
I'm talking about Palmer River.
Right.
And Madeira Ventures is the same entity, the same owner. I saw the name on, on the application, and he hasn't, uh, Leppert hasn't changed his spots, he just changed his location.
There is a, a separate individual, a separate company, a separate source of funds that owns the property and is, is, is paying for this, and it, and it's not, it's not Matt Antonio, it's not Palmer River, it's, it's.
Why was Matt's signature on the application?
As the applicant, right, not as the owner, you know, we, we had the owner, uh, sign it, and then line three was Matt Antonio, the applicant, and, and line five was Rich Rayon, the, the engineer.
Who now is Madeira Ventures?
Madeira Ventures is the owner, and he's the person paying the bill.
And Matt has no affiliation with that?
He, he works for them, he, he basically does the work and then goes to them and they pay him, but they, they are not one of the same. What I might tell you is that the condition of prime engineering walking in, we, we have a good reputation, and I sat down with them and I said, look, if, if we're gonna get involved with this, you're gonna do it our way, you're not gonna do it the old way, uh, you, you gotta straighten these things out. This, this pipe solution, it, it is costing you a fortune, but it could have been avoided by raising the houses and setting them at the right elevation. Same situation's happened at a couple of other sites, and we stepped in and said, okay, here's the solution, it's gonna work, but it's gonna cost you, and you're gonna do it, and he's agreed. So we're, we're looking for approval on lots one and five, and, and it's, it's fine for the planning board to say, the lots aren't released from the covenant until these pipes are put in the ground, and if you can explain to me what needs to be done on lot six for mediation, I'll give you my word they'll get done. Um, I, I, I don't understand, I have no idea what, what damage, was it trees that he cleared that need to be replanted?
He cleared the conservation area when he built the road, and since that time we've been trying to get it rehabbed, and it's not happening.
So do you want?
They filed for the, for the road itself, for Maris Lane.
Yeah.
They had to deal with NHESP.
Yeah.
Conditions were issued by NHESP, uh, and the conservation restricted area was supposed to be untouchable. It's monumented, these lots that you're proposing right now have to have monuments in the back, the rest of the land is there forever, just the way it is right now. He, he ruined it, and he won't rehab it. I don't know what to do. Uh, I was tempted to see if an enforcement order would limiting, following through with the notice of intent would wake him up. But I'm not sure that it's legal, but I, I really don't care.
Again, the, the conditions of prime engineering getting involved is that when this stuff happens, it's gonna start initiate construction, we go out and we stake out the limits of the areas and oversee the installation of the silt fencing, which basically no disturb lines, and we stake out the limit of clearing, we stake out what's going to be done, and we set the benchmarks to make sure that the homes are the right place, then we'll go and locate the foundation and certify that it's the right elevation and the right location.
I really don't have a problem with the lot design or the lot itself, it's clear now, there's nothing on it except the restricted, conservation restricted area.
A good condition would be that no disturbance be made on the lot until the, uh, until this area is state and silt fence, so that there's a clear physical barrier to encroaching line.
Are the monuments depicting the restricted area in place, do you know?
I, I don't know.
Well, okay.
Were they supposed to be concrete bounds or?
Uh, every lot is supposed to have, uh.
Graphite mark?
Yeah, like survey markers, oh, actually it's a sign.
It's a sign, right?
Yeah.
Um, carbonate markers that, yeah, we.
Two in each lot.
Right, we, um, we typically have our surveyors install those, if they're not there, uh, we, we can install, we have the machines to drive it.
I noticed that you, you've got a sultation fence worked in here somewhere.
Because there's no wetlands required.
No, but on the other lots we require a sultation barrier.
Yeah.
Uh, in front of the conservation restricted area.
Yeah, well, that, I, I think that's a good idea, that should be protocol, because it's, it's a physical barrier, so that somebody on a, on a bulldozer doesn't wander into that area. You mark it out physically before anybody goes on the site.
I don't wanna hog this, see? You're doing fine.
I'm not comfortable with it, just because.
I have trouble with the, the sign.
I didn't hear you.
I said I didn't have trouble with it in the lot itself, I booked it a bunch of times, but what hurts me is you won't cooperate with that. As conservation researcher.
Makes you think he's gonna do it with this one.
Yeah.
Another one or two, but I think they were in there, signs were up.
There are some, uh, butters here.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
No, I think these fellows are working on an issue, having to get down a lot, hoping to meet with the, the butters.
No, I'm just asking, are there actual physical markers?
No.
For conservation, Lynn?
Have you been down there?
No, I haven't.
You should take a ride down. It's really a disaster.
There's no line.
So there are no markers behind your homes either?
No, sir.
Any blue?
I'm for, I'm gonna, actually that's mismarked, that says lot three, and it's lot four, that's mismarked, I'm lot four.
Lot three and four already are built, and.
So my house is already flooded because of the problems with the water. I have huge cracks in my basement, I had to put a sump pump in, and it's because, I don't know if you were the original engineer?
No.
They installed everything incorrectly, so now the, the, Mr. Antonio is supposed to contact myself and Mr. Souza, who is at lot three, and we have to sign papers, and that hasn't happened still yet, so we're, that, nothing's gonna happen until he and I sign the papers.
Right, because the, these pipes to drain, to fix the drainage problem have to go across their property, and the, the easement locations are different. So we drew new easement plans and showed easements to be abandoned, easements to be granted, uh, and obviously the people who own the property have to concur. Well, presumably you would agree to allow them to solve the drainage.
Well, the first, initial paperwork that we received, um, stated that if there was any damage done to our properties, we would not hold Mr. Antonio accountable.
There's, there's legality that needs to be determined for the easement be, to be relocated right now, so that's being held up before the planning board will allow.
Work to begin.
The work to begin. That's, that's the, the development has not been touched in years.
Years.
So there's no monuments, there's no, the silt bar.
It's just weeds.
The silt barriers have not been maintained, the, um, the barriers preventing, the silk, the sandbags preventing runoff from going into the.
Are exploded all over the road.
So.
Well.
Sorry, not, not, anything to do with prime engineering.
No, it's not anything to do with you. Can I just ask how close that septic system on lot five is gonna be to the rock wall that is my property?
It's actually gonna be next to, uh.
Can I come to you?
The next property.
Come on. It's about thirty, it's about thirty feet from the stone wall.
Right here.
Okay.
This is three.
Yep, so the stone, this is me, and then I kinda come out here, this is me here.
This is you here.
All right, so there'll be some distance.
So you see, this is twenty-seven feet to the house, and you see how it's a little bit further, so it's a little over thirty feet.
And then all of this runoff will go, like, from the house will go where, into this pipe?
No, no.
Septic system doesn't run off.
No, no, I mean just the runoff from the wall.
The swell from here goes here, the roof water goes into this dry well.
Okay.
And the water.
So it's gonna go this way?
Yeah, except for the, except for the driveway.
The road drains going.
Yeah, the driveway drains here.
Which road isn't draining right now, if there's water.
This is the road drain.
Yeah, it's not draining, we've got a huge pond here.
Okay, and this is the easement for the.
The new easement.
These new drain lines are gonna go here, so there's gonna be a new easement here.
Pipe is existing now.
No, 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 this pipe, this pipe here is existing.
And this is not?
That is not, that's been approved by the planning board, but the planning board wants it installed before they release any more lots in the covenant, so.
That means lot five and lot one.
Right, yeah, so these, these pipes have to be put in, installed.
Okay, so there's gonna be digging there in the near future?
Yes.
And hopefully it'll solve the problem at lot three and four.
Yes.
Anybody else on this project?
I'm in a butter, uh, seven thirty-eight Center Street, North Dayton, I'm being forced to hire a new survey person.
Mrs. Cameron?
I have boundary issues, and it's relating to water runoff, I spoke to a neighbor across the street on Center Street who was pacing that property and, and indicated that there was, they're running a pipe beneath Center Street for the water to run off onto his property, uh, on the southern part of Center Street, and he had complaints about that.
That, that, that pipe, that pipe under the road has been there.
Pardon me?
That pipe under the road has been there for many, many years, that's how the town drained that, you know, it's not a new pipe, it's, it's.
Uh, I'm, I'm just repeating what he told me, I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I'm. Yeah, no, no, I mean, I'm just, you know, saying that, that there's a few under the road in different areas.
Just, so on, this is Center Street and this is Maris Lane coming down. Are you this property to the-
Seven point one acres of it.
But what I'm saying is if we're driving to Maris Lane yard to the right-
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
But most of it going your direction. There's, I own very little on the other side of my driveway going east. Most of my property goes west.
The slot six is right behind your property.
Right, north and the prop, the quantum is thirty-five, thirty-four, thirty-three, thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty. So it's, it's running basically in that direction, southerly, southerly, southwesterly.
Just to add, so, I mean, that's lot one, correct?
Been northwest.
So right now, the green-
This is lot one.
The green shaded area is inundated with water every rainstorm. So whatever happens on lot one is just going to exacerbate whatever happens inside the entryway. That, just so you-
We're dealing with five right now.
That's one.
That's one?
Well, she, she just started talking about lot one. So I flipped around to explain-
Sorry.
Figure out which one is five. So we'll go back to the lot five, which is at the end of Maris Lane and doesn't involve-
I'd like to see that drain laid out and see if it works. Just like the planning board does.
If I can suggest something, maybe they should separate the two issues on that lot. One is the drain, drainage pipe, and then the house. Maybe they should come in with a separate application for the drain line that get done. And then once that's done, and it, you know, it's reasonable. And the conservation restricted area gets vegetated naturally, then the commission can consider lot developed.
Actually, the drain easement is outside of the conservation restricted area. But it is an easement, even though the title to the property is for the home owner. The easement is part of his land as well.
I mean, as it shows, that NOI that is being presented has all the work on it. So the commission would be approving all that work instead of separating two issues out. And the fact that they haven't restored the conservation restricted area, I'm sure National Heritage, that was part of the deal.
It was.
They probably didn't need a permit because they were going to restrict this area and, and they didn't do that. So National Heritage should be contacted. They may, you know, they may want to come back and have another, you know, opinion on whether they need a permit or not.
I'm the homeowner of, my name's Matt Carrera. I own lot seven where that area was disturbed. And I know you and I have gone over with Matt. And to even think he would have the audacity to even come before the conservation commission for anything else after all that you and I and National Heritage has dealt with, with his complete disregard for demands, if they are demands. You had a certain responsibility to repair an area that you damaged after you built the road. And it's been, now it's been close to three years. And he flat out refuses. And you said he was the person who's going to be executing a lot of the work done. And we have a laundry list of problems with the road and its surrounding area. And I don't think anything's going to get accomplished if you, if anything's approved, whether it's here or the planning board or anything. He's an incredibly irresponsible owner. Incredible. Like, I've never seen it before in my life.
The road issues are really playing with conservation areas, would be conservation.
Yeah, the conservation area that was disturbed. And it was, he repaired, or quote unquote repaired, had two, two men weed whacked and planted a few plants to about, I'd say it was probably about eight hundred to a thousand square feet along the west part of my property, where in reality, he damaged twenty-five hundred square feet in a triangular pattern. So he put down markers to delineate the area and it was, it's not, it's not the right square footage. It's not in the right area and it, the weeds are taller than me right now. And there's no plant slot. And it's, that's a conservation issue and-
Sure. What is, what is the remediation supposed to be? Where, was it a forest and he cut trees down or was it open and?
Yes, they removed the vegetation, all of it on the, on that restricted area.
But I'm just wondering, was it trees, shrubbery?
There were trees growing there and under the story too, all of it went.
Yeah.
He proposed, when he built, when he came before us, for his lot, for Matt's lot, to put ground cover, to put some shrubs there, to make it look decent anyway. I'm sure turtles wouldn't have any trouble crawling around a road in the center and then crawling over mulch.
Yeah.
And he never followed through. Promises, galloa. Action, none.
I've called National Heritage, Charlie and I have talked-
I can't.
Counting times.
Count how many times I've communicated with Matt and he with me.
He says he'll do things and he won't do them.
Well, I know he's had problems with his home, but that's not my problem, that's the building department's.
Right.
And I'm sure other homeowners have had the same problem.
Yeah.
But in terms of-
Just not a very nice guy.
I mean, in terms of this, this scenario, that's, that's my issue. I mean, obviously, there are drainage, which is a conservation issue, and, and my home. Those are, those are relative to the conservation commission.
I will, I will talk to them about getting that area straightened out.
Please do. Been waiting a while.
Well, what I would like to do is continue the hearing to the next hearing chair. And see how fruitful you are with your discussion.
Now, the easements haven't even been granted for this across their property yet.
That's correct.
So they can't even go forward with this, even begin with this, until the easements are granted.
That's right. I won't get those drain pipes done by the next meeting. We'll have the mitigation for the areas that he's encroached on done before next meeting. So that you can at least go forward on that. But as I said, the owners, the people who own the property have to give the rights. And obviously, he's calling him harmless from doing damage to property, they're going to go on the property. So there'll be some revisions to the proposed easement language, which has to be done. But I think that, that part could probably be accomplished before your next meeting so that you at least know that those pipes are able to be put in.
Did Mrs. Nova's suggestion have any effect on you?
I, I don't think we need an order of conditions to, to put in the drain line. I, I think that's outside of jurisdiction. But I think, I think the fact that he's impacted the conservation restricted areas is something we need to be corrected before you feel good about.
Relative to that, is that going to discharge into the existing basin?
No.
Where's it discharging?
It, I don't have the plan.
Into retention. Okay, so if that discharges into the basin, which is part of the order of conditions-
Yes.
Then that is jurisdictional work.
The basin was part of the road construction.
Okay, so it's part of it's-
It's in place.
Yep. So it's part of the old order of conditions and really, that should be amended because it's going to be additional flow into that basin. So really, someone should, and I think Rich probably looked at that.
Oh, yeah, no, we did.
What a hundred year storm would do to that basin with additional flow going into it. So it is jurisdictional work. So my suggestion of separating the two outs, I think, is a good idea because the drainage work is really associated with the old order of conditions. And the lot is, is a different, whole different scenario. I interject. So it's really not going to, oh, sorry.
Let it finish.
Okay. But, so, I mean, that's, I mean, I haven't heard, you know, I haven't seen this project and it's, you know, the basin doesn't show on that plan, I haven't looked at the order.
The basin is there and it's maintained, it's a huge basin.
Yeah.
We built the specs.
But I mean, even an RDA for that would be a good idea. Just separate, you really, I would recommend the commission to separate the two issues out, the house and the drainage.
Yeah, which, in other case, if we request an amended order-
An amended order of action.
Or RDA, we could get that before you, before your next meeting so that you have everything in front of you.
Actually, probably amended order would be, would be best. And I'm assuming the order hasn't expired at this point? Is it less than three years old?
The road, I would say yes.
It's expired?
It's been a long time.
Okay, then it would be a-
And I don't believe it's been a-
To be a new noticement intent? Yep. I don't think it'll change the amount of water because if the pipe between our lots had worked properly, it was supposed to run across the road and into the retention pond. That just never happened.
You mean the road, the pipe was never installed?
The pipe was installed, but it was installed too high. So it sat and the water sat here. And then the water pond kept growing and growing. And then he put a berm in and that helped alleviate some of Craig's water a little bit.
Yep.
But it, it has killed my lot.
So it's the same, the same water that's getting there, but it's getting to a different pathway?
I mean, there's, you said you ran drainage gels. They should be submitted to you guys and, and you look at it.
The conserve property is around the corner and it is a lower area. Actually, the house is high and then it dips in the back and comes up to the conservation restricted area. And the easement runs right parallel with the conservation restricted area. Was that connected to your house, that easement?
Yes, there's a, there's a drainage easement right now through my backyard and through Craig's backyard.
Right.
And so what he's doing is he's moving the easement back.
But how does it pick up the water? Is there an opening?
There's no drainage. Oh, sorry.
The easements have never been, the drainage easements have never been implemented. There was the grading, it was supposed to be a natural grading for the easement to disperse the water into a thirty-six inch pipe that runs between our two lots to carry the storm water to the street and then back to the retention pond. The grading was never accomplished in lot three or lot four. So now all, all he ended up doing was just putting a temporary berm in to try to divert the water from lot four into this pipe. But unfortunately, the pipe has been, I think you guys even proved that it's too high.
It's too high. Well, what happens is for, for water to get into a pipe, you have to build up head behind it. And once it's built up enough head, it's in your-
Well, you can talk about this for two years. We agree with you totally, so.
Well, we, we just got involved recently and we said, this doesn't work.
Correct.
Correct.
We've got to change it. And the houses were built too low.
And for whatever reason, lot three is two, my, my home, lot three was built two feet lower than what it should have been. Which has now retabbed across everyone's life.
So we've solved the problem on paper, we just haven't solved the problem in power field.
We have some proposals on paper, we haven't solved any problems yet.
That's right. No, I, I agree. I agree, I, so we will-
Well, I sure would like to continue it.
Yeah.
And the same is going to happen with lot one, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know how, I'm only going with four here, we'll see what happens.
So you're going to make a motion to continue?
Yeah.
To, it'll be till October? October eleventh, is that what it is?
Eleven, yep. Till eleven.
This was a paperwork for a lot. The notice to butters, the DP file number and the proof of the payment of-
Got the file number from DP site today. Thank you. But I'd like to make a motion that we continue the hearing until October eleventh.
All second half? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
With any eyes? Any eyes?
Yeah, all eyes.
All eyes.
As many as you could get, Charlie. Anything different on the next lot?
Well, what I colored in green, the existing wetlands. And the land drains from a height point at the very back of the lot towards Maris Lane. So ground is full dwelling, front yard is going to drain to the street. Back yard is going to drain to a swale that carries it towards that wetlands area. We're keeping a fifty foot, no disturbs on, but the wetlands, that water will drain into the existing pipe across the street. We also also have the same issues with the subdivision overall. So presumably, the suggestion is going to continue the meeting to October eleventh.
Never happened.
Yeah. He put the plant so. Seventy-five percent of water. It has not. This is lot two. This is lot four. This is Mrs. Cameron's lot. That's not existing.
Yeah.
Used to be the old living room. It's way off the road. It's a pretty big parcel. The rest of buffer zone of this wetland. So part of the house is in the buffer zone?
Yes, it was in the hundred foot buffer zone, but no work done within the fifty foot buffer zone.
Yeah, this is one I noticed, the silt fence, that should be extended all the way around.
Yes, the, the big line, this orange line that goes all the way around to here. I, I agree.
How does the house elevation here compare to the road?
House elevation is thirty-seven and the road is thirty-three. Top of foundation is thirty-seven.
Thirty-three, thirty-two. Well, it looks like it's depressed as well.
No.
There's thirty-two in the back.
Thirty-seven and the, the road is thirty-three and the grade in front of the house is thirty-five. Foundation slab is thirty-seven.
Top of the foundation is thirty-seven.
Oh, that's okay. Well, I should get, I didn't count these. Yeah, so the house is elevated a little bit higher than the road. The grain easement doesn't extend into this lot?
No.
This one's green, but it's a wet one.
This, yeah, this surface is green, but it's a wet one.
So this house will be eye elevation then, plots three and four?
Yep. I don't, I don't know where three and four is right now.
Yeah, I don't have a plan.
How much, I'm at twenty-nine.
Yeah, the twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine to the basement.
If the house is going to be built even over the road, it is below the road, so they're stuck in the middle again. That makes it even more of a canyon.
Yeah, well, we've, again, the pipe, the proposed pipes that are going to be installed is going to drain. His house was supposed to be two feet higher than it was and- His house was supposed to be two feet higher than it was and it would, everything would have been fine if it had, if the house had been built the way it had been drawn. But it didn't get built the way it was drawn, so that's why we've had to put in those double pipes to the, to solve the problem.
Are three and four both, this, below the line, lot three, they represent lot four?
I am for. We, we were never wet until...
Lot three doesn't have a flooding problem?
Lot four does now, because the pipes have been, the ground has, he's been moving everything he, he's put aside, he's just finagled everything.
Lot three is, as you stated, currently, right now, a bowl. You're right.
Three and four are a bowl and we're putting a drain in the bottom of the bowl.
Okay.
But correct, sorry, not to get, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're asking for a lot of storm water from other lots to come across three other lots to get to this drainage, correct?
Yeah. Isn't, isn't the pipe we're putting on like thirty-six inch pipes?
It's two twenty, it's two thirty-six, yeah. Fair enough, I guess, I'm sorry. It's not a concern.
Right, I, I wasn't involved directly in the, in the pipe discussion.
The only, if, I don't know, the only, the only problem I, potential problem I see currently right now, the green wetlands substantially floods with any rain event right now, with about two, three feet of water, stays for about four, five weeks stagnant, does not, does not dissipate, does not leave, stays. So any, any, any additional water that lot one is going to introduce to this situation is just going to make that situation worse.
We can, we can provide you with a calculation showing whether it's going to increase the volume.
I think you're going to have to do that, because we're not engineers.
Right. A, a portion of this is going to be brought to the street and has already been accounted for in the drainage system in the back. So that portion will be deducted. The balance of the land will be raised up a little bit, but the same amount of rainfall on that portion will be getting to, to the wetland system. But we can certainly... You're saying the wetland floods three fifty...
Yeah.
And stays that way for six weeks?
Apparently, approximately.
When it rains, I mean, I'm sure this neighbor can attest to that. If you're, you're the brown house? Yeah. I'm surprised the lot hasn't been owned to your property yet. Basement's become an issue. You guys.
Unfortunately, I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Does your proposal result in more or less water going into the wetland?
What you call it, it's a Maris, developing.
That's where I said I would use a calculation to show whether it doesn't...
Coral, the brown trail.
If it adds more, it's unacceptable.
Maybe I'm, I'm young, I'm a young one.
There were no calculations that came from this?
No, not for, not for the individual lot. There were in the original subdivision review process, but not, not for this lot.
No, this is a new proposal. We'll need more information.
Again, I'm going to make the same motion, Richard.
Yeah.
I move that we continue the hearing until ten eleven and maybe you can come up with a calculation for whether it would affect that wetland area or not. And how it would affect three and four. If there's any water that's draining in that area now, it's certainly not going to drain at all with this construction.
Did you make a motion?
I did, I made a motion. We're outside of the hearing. Outside of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This is the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Wish it was under better circumstances.
Elder seven, ten, four, power.
Last man standing, I guess. How are you guys tonight? You are? My name is Ed Switzer, I'm with Forefront Power.
Go slower.
Ed, Ed Switzer, Forefront Power. S W I T Z E R.
You're with TRC?
I'm with TRC.
So we're requesting an NOI to do work, to install the solar at Zero Williams Street. And we're doing some work with some tree clearing within the wetlands. And so we're requesting the ability to do that in the NOI. And approval for our SWIP.
Question?
Yes.
The, about the notifications?
Mm-hmm. Where are they?
You need the green cards?
Good girl. You saved the day.
That's why we brought you.
Do you, do you have more?
How about the advertising fee? What do you think is that?
Yeah, that should have already been sent to, to you guys.
Has been taken care of?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, you have a receipt? Did it by, what, email?
One, one of the other, one of my coworkers did it, so, so, yeah, we can, we can definitely get that to you.
Okay. We do need a receipt.
Okay.
All yours.
Perfect. So we're, we're doing, we're currently in site plan review and special use permit. We went to the planning board last week. We decided to move that hearing to next week so we could come meet with you guys, get your input and hopefully incorporate that into the plans that they're going to take a look at next week. And then we'll come back and if there's any loose ends with you guys, we can tie them up next month sometime, but...
I noticed reading through the notice of intent, you're going to be cutting in wetlands?
That's correct. If, if, if we want to flip through, I can show you.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, okay.
It's my impression that DEP looks frowns on that. We had a proposal and for previous solar farm that proposed cutting wetlands, we approved some cutting for overstory, for shading.
Mm-hmm.
And DEP issued a superseding order of conditions, no cutting for shading. That's for shading. They have plenty on cutting to put in solar panels. I don't know how that's going to fly.
So we're, we're actually, we're close, but we're not putting the, the panels in. If you look here, we'd be installing fence, but, and there's a twenty-foot buffer between the fence line and the panels, so we'd be outside, the natural panels would be pretty close, probably abutting into the twenty-five foot buffer, but no panels themselves would go closer.
This should do with my, my code?
Yeah, that's correct. And we've got the twenty-five, fifty and hundred. And you can see that, yes, we do put the fence within the twenty-five foot buffer, but with that twenty feet, there's, it respects the twenty-five foot buffer around.
The panels are outside the twenty-foot buffers, huh?
Yes, that's correct. We, there'd be fencing within the twenty-five feet, but, and there would be clearing within the wetlands themselves, but no...
Now, isn't there some field proposed for here?
No.
No?
Here's here. The interconnection point is right here.
And that's all the lanes in that area?
Yeah, the, the, the main wetland is right here. And then there's something offside.
But you propose some...
Clearing over here. And clearing on the south side. We would run holes here, we can span the wetland, so we may, we may have, we would have to put poles within the, at least the fifty-foot buffer. We think we can help us span it from here to here. But if, if, if we can't, we would just run it through around and bury it.
And nothing is proposed for here?
That's right.
Normally for a project like this, we hire a consultant to protect our interests.
Sure.
And I'm going to propose to the commission tonight that we establish a fifty-three G account to go over the notice of intent, go over the wetland lines and any other resource areas that might be affected.
Okay.
Funding, I, I don't know how long it would take, but if there's any, any monies left in a fifty-three G account, it's returned to the applicant anyway. But I'm going to propose three thousand dollars of fifty-three G fund.
And so what is the fifty G?
Fifty-three G is a, is a, an account that's set up by the town. It's allowed under the wetland act.
Okay.
Gives us an opportunity to hire a consultant to review the plan and stay with the plan as long as the order can, notice of intent is in process.
Got it, okay. So you, is when...
We would set up the account, hire a consultant and they would be your opposition or her opposition.
Got it. So they, would, would they have to approve the, the project or would you have to approve?
They would be our consultants and we do the approving and disapproving.
Okay.
They give us all the information we need to, to work with.
Okay. And generally, how long does, does that take?
It would last as long as the project is in consideration till it's approved.
Is it, so, when would that process start is what I'm saying, I guess, when would the review?
As soon as you'd like it to start. We don't have a permanent wetland consultant. We hire them as, as we need them and the wetland act gives us an opportunity to make you pay for our consultants, a hell of a deal for us.
So if we, okay, so from just like a timing perspective is my main concern.
Yeah.
We send it in check tomorrow.
I'm sure you're going to run into the same problem with the planning board. They have a permanent consultant.
We already got his comments, actually. And we've already, he's, he's sent us his comments before the meeting, or a couple days after the meeting and we've, we've addressed those. And so we'll, we'll go back and talk to them next week. We can get you guys, you prefer wire or check or cash in a briefcase?
There's not much we can do tonight.
Right, no, that's, I, I get that, but what I, my, like I said, my concern is getting you... Yeah. I do back there, I can grab it in a sec. Is, we can get you the, the three thousand dollars?
Payable to the town of Titan.
Mm-hmm. Just that we can drop off the check.
Uh, yes.
To the treasurer's office, okay. Okay, we'll get that, we'll get that in. And then how long after receipt of that check can we kick off the, the review with your consultant?
We would get a review of this before the ten, eleven meeting.
Perfect, all right. We'll get you, we'll get that check in for the end of the week.
Three, three B ones, three, three drinks.
Three, yeah.
You can give us four if you want.
I'm not writing the checks.
Yeah, I thought, I have a little Thursday, town hall's closed Friday, so it'll have to be tomorrow and next Monday.
I think it'll be next Monday then, because you can head back home tomorrow.
I don't know, it's got, it's got a, coming down Friday and over the P S.
Got it, okay. So we'll, we'll drop it off Monday, but I just wanted to...
I'm going to put it in a motion form first.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to the commission that we establish a fifty-three G account with three thousand dollars of seed money for this project.
Okay, better work. We're going to the check on Monday and then I'll see you gentlemen a day later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Keep going, keep going, Ed.
Thanks.
Ken, is this what you're here for? Do you have questions? Okay.
No.
Cool. Thanks, guys, see you on the eleventh.
You're not going to the neighbors' greenhouses, are you?
What's that?
No. Just visiting, guys? Thanks. The more people, the better we look on TV.
This is the complete plan, right?
Yeah. I got two. Who, who wants them most?
One, two.
Grab some more. Cool, all right. And so, like I said, we'll be in front of the planning board next week and we'll address any more of the comments.
Well, you've got the ball rolling here.
And we have, like, and if there's any new plans, we'll, we can submit those via email as like updates to these for the consultant review.
If they could require revisions, we would, same for us.
Okay, great. Better work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night.
Was this one wrapped up yet or no?
No. Well, we've got a couple more things, but...
Okay, he was just confused, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can go home if you want.
Okay?
Okay.
Get you, scope and feet, testament.
Be safe, Molly.
Thank you.
I'm good, I'm on, see you next month.
Good night, Ken.
Why you sound up at two-thirty this morning?
Keep an eye on Ken.
Yeah. This is easy for you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we received a donation of five acres of land behind the town, town far, behind the town far, on Chestnut Street.
The town forest.
From the executor of the estate of E. Otis Dyer Junior. Wow.
Paul E. Dyer Junior died.
The younger fellow, that's the younger guy.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, his father died quite a while ago.
Yeah.
His sister is the executor, executor of Cricks, actually. And she's offered the land. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't take it. It interferes, there's, he's two parts, a parcel behind, not adjacent to, but one parcel behind the town forest. Our buddy's over at Apex on the other portion, in Pawtucket. The former, what the hell is that? I never think of it when I, when I have to. They, they applied for the land on Tremont Street.
Yeah, Melican. Melican Industries.
Yes.
So what's your, what's your, you feel we should take this property?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to be accepted donation.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's good.
That's sound. The next rule is a workshop.
Coastal Zone Management Division, D E P, to attend a workshop discussing their new coastal manual.
It's September twentieth and it's from nine to twelve. Anybody who's interested can go and if you get there at eight-thirty, we'll give you a coffee and donuts.
Oh, yeah.
It's, I don't know where the hell it's at, Dartmouth.
Right.
Okay.